We will call the committee of the whole to work. We'll have to call roll.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers is Anson. Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I am here, and I will refer a motion to excuse Marty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Sue.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is Anson. Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
And I will refer a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'll support.
Anybody need to change anything? Sue again.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is Anson. Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. Uh, any citizen discussion for our agenda? Okay, well, we'll clarify for the chamber commander's place in the city.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor City Council. Um, I've had a number of meetings with the chamber of Congress, um, over the last, say, over the last year about, um, the future plan for the, for the facility that they're in. Currently, they lease the, uh, the space from the city. And, um, they, they've approached us about, one, possibly buying the, buying the facility, or determine what the city might be interested in, in, in doing with this. I know they would have, they want to have, they want to have an interest in the downtown. They want to be part of the downtown, and obviously, I support that. There was, there've been some, we've had some pretty good discussions about it, and they obviously have some concerns with, uh, some, you know, whatever direction we may take. And I kind of felt it might be best to actually just engage the council and the chamber with this discussion tonight, uh, to determine, um, that path that we might go down in the future. Some of the conversations I've had with them, um, is obviously the concern is just, one, does the city want to be a landlord? That's the first question. It's not, that's really not the, that's really not the business that we're, we're special of sin. And it's, the less properties that we have to be a landlord of, I would say, the better. The other, the other issue is, is that, uh, obviously, with all of the improvements that are going to be happening in that area with the showboat, um, the question is, is that the best use of the property? I don't have an answer to that. I do know that that would be highly valuable property if everything we, we envision what is going to happen with the showboat happens. So that was another part of the discussion. So I met with them, and I felt it was really hard for me to, to have a discussion, um, have a discussion with, on this matter without, without involving the council. So, uh, I guess Liz, uh, Liz come up and, or whoever's going to be presenting with, uh, what, what the concerns are with the chamber with going forward.
A big cutter.
That's who I talked to, so, okay.
We didn't quite understand how this whole meeting was, so I don't...
It's more of an open conversation.
Matter of fact, we were told it was going to be in a room, relaxed atmosphere, not quite a full meeting, so it's a little, little different than what it was.
Sorry. We do everything, these are the informal meetings before the major meetings, so we just do everything here.
When you guys all took your place, we kind of figured this out.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. I'm with you now. Um, the biggest concern we have, obviously, is we have a year and a half left on our contract, right, our lease with you guys. And we want to know, there's a lot of plans in Lowell, we want to know, where do you guys see the chamber? And a year and a half, is there anything that we should be looking for? Would you ever consider a Lowell city without the chamber being in the center hub to direct all the events and bring in all the people between Santa visits, um, poker run, girls' night out, Santa parade? If we were to unfortunately have to move because the building gets sold for nominal value, and you take the quick check, if you will, what would that leave for the chamber? Would we have to look outside of town? We need to know what the council is looking at. Again, we've started talking, these discussions with a, two years on our contract, I believe, and now we're at a year and a half. So before we get to the end and we're scrambling, we certainly would like to hear what you guys, the thoughts of the city council in the future of the chamber. So that's where we're at right now. We had discussed purchasing the building, therefore cementing the chamber in the center hole, also getting you out of the landlord business. So that's kind of what our plan was. The idea that the land may be more valuable in three to four years and you guys could make profit on it is certainly understandable, but then again, we're looking at it from what we do at the chamber versus that quick check you'll get, and we just want to know what your guys' thoughts are. Unless, did I miss anything? Everything?
I personally have never met you, I know some of the people, so I'm Jim and you are?
Cutter.
Cutter?
I am the treasurer of the chamber, which is why I'm not sure, because I do a month. No, I've actually been a part of the chamber going on, I want to say 14 years, and that's primarily worked my way up, sat on the board many, many times, looked at the value of it, and so that's where we're at right now. We are actually, we are looking at our budget, this came up last year, and now we've already lost six months on our end, so we want to make sure that we, both of us, are in the same consistent view of the future of the land, the council, and the chamber.
We're just talking about how we feel right now?
Yeah.
Can I go first?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I've been down there for a number of events, I've never, ever not seen Liz down there, ever. I think that most of the stuff happening down by the showboat and most of the stuff happening in downtown is due in large part to Liz and the stuff that the chamber does. I don't really care, honestly, about the value of that building in four or five years because any extra value that building has in four or five years is because of stuff Liz has done. I think they need to be there. I think, uh, we have maybe not, as a city in the past, sacrificed enough for the chamber, considering what they do for us, and I don't think there's any reason for that to continue. I think we have the right people in place now to foster that relationship and make it better than it's been. And if we need to take a small loss on a, on a building, she needs to be there, Liz and her people need to be there, they need to be by the showboat and by downtown. And I don't think any price we could give for that building would be worth losing them or whatever. They already do so much, but so little. You know, we've talked before about what we can do to help them, and I don't think making money on a building is nearly as important as the stuff that they do. You know, what kind of money are we going to lose if she's not involved with all the stuff? I say Liz, but I know there's other people. Yeah, the chamber.
I know.
Yeah.
She runs all the...
So I don't, I'm glad that we're finally having this discussion, because I've been wanting to talk about this for a long time. That's how I feel, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I don't, I don't care about that building, really. Without Liz in it, what, there's no, what are we going to put in there? You know what I mean?
No, I would agree 100%. The success of Lowell is due to the chamber, and it's taken you a long time to build where we're at. Also, there's been some private investors that have helped, but Lowell is looking better than it ever has, I think, and, and the promotions that you guys put on as a team is, is just tremendous. I don't see any reason to sell the building to you and take money out of your pocket. I don't know what the rental arrangement is now, but I think, you know, keep your money for doing what you do, and we keep you in that building. It does serve kind of a dual purpose, because you use it during the day, but it's also used for events and things, so it's really not that we're taking anything away from the events. It's a win-win the way it is, and I see no reason not to continue that and help you in any way we can.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to, like I said, I wasn't trying to steer us away from that, I just want...
Discussion, thank you.
There's a lot of different, there's a lot of different options for this, that's why, and I didn't think, you know, I didn't want to be the one who made the decision.
Right, so I can hear you guys' other opinions?
And Liz, at your last meeting, you had come in and you also asked the city for maybe helping you with promotions and things like that. Will, will this relieve some of that pressure, or are you still going to look for us to help donate towards your marketing dollars that you, you talked about? I don't think it's a cure-all, but...
There we go.
A lot of people might want to. Um, I don't necessarily think that, I think the marketing and our home are probably two different things, in a way. No, it probably won't stop us from asking, because as a city, you need to market, you absolutely need to market, and we have taken up that responsibility with the city and the townships for the last 10 years. And we love doing that, by the way. I mean, when we, well, I will say, when I started 25 years ago, there wasn't any direction in the city, in the townships, anywhere. I mean, everybody, you know, it was, it was a hard time. Main Street was boarded up from one end to the next, and, um, it was the schools' vision to put somebody in the chamber position. And because of that, they hired me for five bucks an hour, 24 years ago, 25 years ago. Greg, or Mr. Lair, gave us a building down here, you know, the little, the little gas station building, I should, I should remember, 526 East Main, I guess. We didn't even have a toilet, Greg had to come and unfreeze the toilet so we could have a toilet for the next 10 years, that was our home. And then, it was going so well that the city had the foresight to say, we need to put the chamber in that building. And that's how we got our next home. And, you know, like Greg said, with a lot of private dollars and grants and hard work from my boards to my committees, um, we made our home a beautiful home and an open door to the community and to businesses, and, um, it's just gone so well. So I guess, you know, as we felt like we might lose our home, it was, it's been kind of stressful for all of us, but, um, I don't, I don't know. Do you guys want to say anything?
So like Liz, like Liz said, we thought maybe we might lose our home, and it's because we started talking about making improvements to the building and the improvements that we have done, and because we're renters, we don't really have vested, we don't own the building, so we're just throwing money at the building, being a renter. So we want to make improvements, yet we don't own a building, so we're kind of in the catch-22, and that's what started the conversation about, hmm, I wonder if the city would be interested in, because we do want to add another office and we want to expand and grow, so that's kind of where we're coming from originally. But then that turned into, well, now that building's been worth a lot of money, so maybe we should talk to Mike and the council and see where we're at, so that's one of the other reasons why we're here. We have a great partnership with the city, I mean, the DPW, Rich, DPW guys do a lot for our events, and we really appreciate everything working together with our festivals.
I should also add to the council, um, I want to read a charter, there is, there are charter provisions about actually selling property. And I talked to the city attorney about this, and it's actually section 13.3 of the top of the charter, section B, and it says, "The, uh, the city shall not have the power to purchase, sell, or dispose of any real estate unless, in case of a sale, there should be at least two published advertisements for bids prior to adoption of a resolution for sale or disposal. Suggestion is approved by the affirmative vote for more members of the council, and unless, in the case of real estate owned by it, the resolution authorizing the sale, lease, or disposal thereof shall be completed in the matter, which is finally passed, has remained unfiled with the clerk of public inspection for 20 days before the final adoption or passage thereof, unless..." And then, to continue, um, except as provided by this ordinance, um, each contract for construction, or, okay, that goes with tenure, but what, what I'm basically saying is, is that, you know, if we were to sell, you just couldn't gift it to them, you would actually have to put it out for an RFP, um, or, or maybe an RFQ, you don't necessarily have to give it to the highest bidder, you give it to whoever, whatever standard you feel, but if you were to do that, you do, if you were to sell it, it would, it would open it up to other people because the charter allows, requires that. So just something to keep in mind.
Well, we don't have to sell it to them, we can continue to, and, and I'm with you, I'm, I'm glad you want to make improvements, because I think that area's going to be amazing. And, and how would we do that if you guys did make improvements to it? I mean, do we lease it to them, or would you just let them use it until further notice? Or, I mean, how could you do that?
I mean, I think what you, you know, if the lease expired, and they wanted to stay, you could obviously, if they didn't want to purchase it, you could obviously extend the lease.
How much are you paying now? Dollar a year?
A little bit more, but close.
Yeah, well, that's what it should be.
Twenty-four hundred dollars a year. And I think that, um, just about covers the utilities, that is probably what it does. Rich could probably answer that. I know a couple of years ago, we double-checked on the utilities and they were pretty even as far as what we were paying.
So it's a dollar plus utilities?
No, no, we don't pay that.
That's what I mean, so your, your rent really is just utilities?
Correct.
Which, that's, that's an expense of being in the building?
As far as the improvements, the chamber made all the improvements that building 13 years ago, I guess now. But sometimes, it's hard if you're getting grants to make improvements to a building if you don't own it, unless you have a really strong lease. And I know that the city can't do a 100-year lease, you can only do 10-year leases. So, but that's, 13 years ago is a little bit different than it is in today's world. Anybody else?
What happens if in 10 years, if we're, like, we're all gone, maybe, who knows? And then the new council says, no, that we can use it for tacos, stand, whatever, then we just undone, undone all that work for the last 30-plus 10 years, I don't, it doesn't make me feel comfortable.
You don't, you know, the rest of, what were your council...
Yeah, I mean, it's not saying...
When Mike said we wouldn't have to take the highest bidder, so...
I would say you'd have to take the most, what you feel is the most qualified for that property, I would say it that way, which, yeah.
Wish it would be an asset to our community.
Can you take into the value of what the chamber does and what it brings to the table as far as other...
The risk you have, though, if somebody offers a hundred thousand and really wants it, then people are going, oh, we need that money to fix the road. I'm not sure the community appreciates you as much as the council does, and the business community appreciates you, but taxpayers that want the roads fixed, they go, oh, take the hundred and run, that's...
I know.
But you're going to bring us a lot more than a hundred thousand, aren't you, Liz?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I guess a hundred thousand isn't going to fix anything.
No, the, the perception by the public.
I understand that, I understand.
I would think that future council members would kind of be in the same position, where they would recognize the value of that. What, what do you guys feel? Do you, do you feel that a purchase is better than a dollar a year?
We've been saving money for years gone by, everything that we do, we've been putting away. We do have some money, and for us personally, I know that there was a talk, when was the talk about the second building being bought up and where we would be?
About two years ago now?
So about two years ago, um, to, to be quite honest, about two years ago, we wanted to buy our half of the building, and there was some talk about another suitor wanting that part of the building, and maybe even our part. Even though we had a lease, there was still the conversation of, well, could you guys, could, could you guys move? Quite honestly, we do have some money, and I think that we probably could make a very reasonable offer for you guys. For us, we look at it as a win. If we were to purchase the building from you, you are no longer a landlord, you don't have to worry about the repairs every time it rains, which, you can see it's not raining, and it is, which we probably do. But we would like to take, and quite honestly, I think I speak for most of the people we've had this conversation, we would like to take ownership of it. We've already put 50,000-plus dollars in the renovations of it, and like you said, if another council comes and we don't get it, or case may happen, then we would lose that money and just walk right away. So, and for us, we certainly would love another lease, that's obviously, we want to stay here. To purchase it, however, would be something that we're very interested in, and I, I know we're throwing around numbers, I don't know how serious that 100,000, but it could be. We would have some money to put forward, and it would be more than a dollar a month, of course, and we would like to own the building in that way, no matter what happens at the council level, we don't have this conversation again in four years, if there's turnover, there's other problems. And again, we were, I think that we're at the point now where we would like to secure the future of the chamber, because Liz is, as good as she is, she will not be here forever.
That's not true.
What's that?
That's pinker.
That's pinker.
Oh, my people.
So anyways, from, from our standpoint, we would, we would like the building to be ours, therefore you guys would not have to, we'd never go leases, landlord-ing, fixing anything, and then that would be a permanent fixture for the chamber, no matter how big the Lowell grows, that would be the center hub, and we would have our chamber there to make sure that the heartbeat's still there.
That's great, and I, I would love to see you own it as well, but the only thing that I would like to see then, if something were to happen and you didn't want it anymore, would you give the city the first option to purchase the property back?
Yes, because we are not, we're not in the, we're not real estate muggles, we're not looking to buy it for 40 and then sell it for 250, even if we did that, where would we go?
I understand, I'm not talking down the road and...
I can add on that. One other thing, one of my experience, one of my, my past experience, I put restrictive, we put restrictive covenants on buildings, dedicating what they can and cannot be, um, and, uh, I don't know if you can necessarily, I'd have to look into it further, whether I could mandate it come back to the city, but you can definitely put enough restrictions on the building to ensure that that facility is, is for what you, what you want it to be, because obviously, the concern would be that, you know...
Looking for...
Exactly.
Right.
And I, that would, that is, that was a concern.
And it is, it's...
For those that don't know me, I'm John Zelensky, I'm with the Street of History. Just to build on what Mike's saying, you know, that's a common practice to put some sort of guidance within yourself and, uh, buy-sell agreement. You know, again, we, you know, we all, I think, agree, she disappeared, we all agree the value of Liz and what she's done for the chamber and the city Lowell. And so, you know, as we look at those things, not to negotiate this evening with this, but, you know, you can look at a land contract deal, you can look at something that would revert back to the city if it ever crumbles under the guidance and leadership of the chamber. You can look at those covenants, as Mike pointed out, that you can restrict what happens and/or give yourself within, you know, a margin of value, uh, first right to repurchase that, that property. You know, I know they're working on their policies and guidelines and, and their directions as a board, as a chamber board, and, you know, I'm sure part of those, those policies are on is, uh, what happens if they dissolve themselves, what happens to their assets, what happens to those things. And so that can be part of the discussion of the board with the chamber and, and vice versa, so that their policies give you a little protection again in case they have to dissolve for other reasons. So I think there's plenty of options there. Again, obviously, the option of the board, uh, of the chamber, um, is to have that stability, so if they want to invest in that money, or in, in that building, they're sure they can get that back. And/or just ultimately, the security of knowing they are going to be part of the downtown, as Mr. Canfield pointed out, that is the heartbeat of the city, is, is having Liz close to people to get that interaction with that industry group, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're all definitely in support of this, as we stated, but devil's advocate, you guys purchased that, and is that going to be, what, a third of the building, roughly? It's more than a quarter?
Well, I think it's almost half.
So you buy half of it, and somebody leaves 5 million to Lowell, and we can do something really amazing down there, but you own this little piece and you don't want to change it, now we have to develop around it, whereas if something grand happens where we go up another floor above that with some type of restaurant or other option, it, it ties our hands with what we can do once we give it up. And it's, it's just like the Lowell Light and Power Building across the, the Line Shack that I've said, don't sell it, you know, once you sell it, you've lost control of it, and we want you there forever, but if somebody wants to throw a bunch of money at it and you get something twice as nice and two stories or whatever, that's just one thing that's done.
Get a gold seat instead of a platinum, a gold chair instead of a platinum. You know, I think all along, I've never thought we should ever purchase the building because we've always had such a great relationship with the city of Lowell, we really have. I mean, like I said, it was their vision to put us there. So, and your comment about councils that change, that, that is true, but then, I guess, it's our job to make sure that we continue to bring the services that we're doing right now to the city of Lowell. If not what we're doing now, we need to do it even better than we're doing it. And I believe that the chamber can do that in the years to come. I have no doubt in my mind that they're on the right track 100%. That's how confident I am in all of these people and our businesses that support the chamber. So, I mean, if we could work out a wonderful lease and, you know, be able to sign another 10 years and maybe the, I don't know, you know, I think, I think that our committee are, needs to discuss it some more. But I feel like part of you are saying you'd rather keep the building than part of your, kind of, not sure.
I want to support you 1,000%, but I agree with Greg, I mean, we talked about the Line Shack over there, too. I want you to have the building, I just don't want the city someday to have the, you know, down the road 20, 30 years, I mean, that area's going to be booming for a long time, and it's only going to get better. And I just hate to see the city someday lose an opportunity, if you guys weren't there, to lose it forever. That's my only thing, I, I support you 1,000%, and whenever these guys decide, I'm fully behind them, but, and I want you there, I'm just looking down the road, because it's only going to get better down there. And, you know, I want you to make those improvements so it does get better, and I will fully support you in that as well, too. I want you there, so we'll do whatever it takes. I just want the city to have the option down the road, 20 or 30 years from now, if they be, if they need to get it back, they can. I mean, it's, it's great property.
Yeah, but it's only going to be worth those, these dollar amounts we're talking about because of work that they're doing. I don't, I mean, I get it, devil's advocate, and I get it, worst-case scenario, whatever, I don't know, it's not going to be worth nothing without Liz and all the work that they're doing over there. So to say, hmm, you can't have it because we might want back someday because of all the work you did, you know, it's like taking credit for somebody else's home, you know what I mean?
How about we... Well, no, I know, but I can, I can, I mean, how about we go back, we talk some more, and can we come back and have another one of these meetings, discussions? Where you can think about that more, but let us talk about lease purchase in, in depth and come back again. But I, for one, whoops, I don't want to speak, I'm okay? Oh, yes, I spoke, yeah.
All right, I have to back, I'm a board member of the chamber, and, uh, I think we're back to square one right now, I'm sorry, but we came here to kind of find an answer, and now we're back to, are we going to sell it, are we going to lease it, you know, so I understand you cannot say yes or no tonight, but I think we're all in agreement, we need the chamber in here, and that's what it's got to do. If we buy the building and somebody comes in with 4 million, they can buy us out. I mean, if that's going to happen in the future, and I'm ready to move, if somebody wants to put 4 million dollars in that building, we're moving, that's, so, that's my opinion, so. You don't want to be in the landlord business, we, we got a lot of money invested in the building, and we still haven't a straight answer now, what's going to happen, we got a year and a half on the lease and clock's ticking, so I hear a lot of people in favor of selling the building to us, am I right, wrong?
It's an option.
An option, okay.
And I think you do have an answer that you're not looking at a year and a half, you can stay either way. The door's open. We, the only reason that, that I would see you leaving that building is if you choose to. I can't see the city ever.
I mean, you know, we invested already 60,000 dollars, are we going to do that again? And then 10 years from now, when you say, thank you, it'd be nice knowing you, that you'd ever leave? You know, that's the security we want to have, because money doesn't grow on trees in our department, it's, we put a lot of hours into it, a lot of begging, and, you know, we have a lot of support, and if we, we do all that, and 10 years from now, you say, well, it'd be nice, we got a nice building, thank you very much, it looks great, and we're done, we don't want to be in that position. I understand your position, too, we're all in business, we're all here to make a dollar, but we're here to keep, try to keep our head above water, that's what we're doing, so if we can buy the building... If we can buy the building for a fair price and work out a deal that we can, you know, yep, somebody comes with big pockets and find, give us a little bit of a tune and we're, we're gone, you know, or, or make provisions, yeah, you can buy just with the Chamber. You gotta have a little corner of your building or something like that.
Is it probably been assessed for our value?
Uh, no, that's my knowledge. That was something I was just thinking of, that maybe, well, something we need to do is have that area prayed.
Well, I hope you don't feel like you're starting all over 'cause we, we fully, all of us up here fully support you. And if, if it works and you can buy it, I'm all about it.
Right, right.
So we fully support you. I don't want you to move and I don't wanna take it from you. It's kind of like you're saying, you don't know what's gonna happen, just like we don't know what's gonna happen with other councils. But Liz's Council fully supports you. And, um, I think, I'm sure we can work something out and make everybody happy.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
We'll come back, right?
Uh, yeah, I just wondered, I guess the thought process is, once you guys have some, I'll meet with you and then I'll,
Okay.
And I would say we come back to the Council.
Okay, sounds good. And I do appreciate all your words of support. I mean, it does mean a lot to us. We have worked hard and we are, we really have been here to serve, serve the city, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeffrey, Council Board Member of the Council.
I just wanna thank everybody for their input on this subject. I mean, there's a lot of things that you don't think about and then you, as the meeting goes on, you think about them and you re-digress and bring it forward. So that's what I like about this Board, open-minded and looking forward to it. So thanks.
No, I'd just like to thank the Chamber. They, they really have put Lowell on the map and we wouldn't be where we're at today without you. And we are 100% in support of you and whatever works best for you. I was, the discussion of leasing rather than selling was just trying to help you keep some money in your checkbook. Because I, I just can't see the community ever wanting you anywhere but down there because you're responsible for the success of Lowell. You know, we pull you out of there and the whole place folds up like a house of cards, so. But, uh, whatever works best for you guys and, and your plans, uh, sit down with your committees and make a decision what's best and the City will do everything that I can, that we can work with you.
I would agree with that. I've said enough, I think. Michael, can you announce? Nope, I'll be happy to do it.
Right, Council.
I think we have some options to look at. You guys have some options you can look at. We'll do this again, hopefully sooner than later. With that, Mr. Solomon.
Then I'll make the motion to adjourn at 6:07.
Support.
All those in favor?
Yes.